January fourteenth, two thousand fourteen. Gulf County Board of County Commissioners is now in session.
First of all, I want to thank you for coming out today. If you would join me in prayer, would you please? Father, as we've come before and start a new year and new day, Lord, we ask that you lead us, guide us, and direct us as we go about conducting the business of the great people of Gulf County. Lord, we ask that you come into our hearts and touch our hearts, that we will show love, kindness, and courtesy to all. Lord, we ask that you bless not only this county, but the great state of Florida and the United States of America. Lord, bless our troops and our military that put their lives on the line every day for our freedom. And bless those that have come before them, that in the Great World War II, and the Korean War, and right on up through to Vietnam, bless them too for putting their lives on the line. And last, Lord, we ask that you bless all of our law enforcement throughout the United States, and especially here in Gulf County. These people put their lives on the line daily to protect our lives. We ask this all in your son's precious name. Amen. Would you join me in that? Please, please.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna change the format just a touch, if I could at this time. Mr. Smiley, will you come down, please? Mr. Smiley, we have a plaque here we want to present to you. It says, "The Chairman Talon Smiley, Chairman of Gulf County Board of County Commissioners, January two thousand thirteen through December two thousand and thirteen, presented its fourteenth day of January two thousand fourteen by the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners. Commissioner McLemore, District One, Commissioner Bryan, District Three, Commissioner Yeager, District Five, and Commissioner McDaniel, District Two." Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Before we start the official regular meeting, I want to address not only the board, the staff, but the people. In two thousand thirteen, the Florida Legislature passed Senate Bill Fifty, and that bill states how that boards and how chairs throughout the sixty-seven counties in the state of Florida will conduct meetings. Now, first of all, we will follow the Roberts Rules of Order. Now, this was adopted by this board, I went back and had some research done in two thousand and four by the former Chair and Commissioner Peters. So we will follow the Roberts Rules of Order. Now, the only way we can deviate from that would be a motion, a second, and a majority vote of the board. I intend to follow this. Now, in the Roberts, in the Senate Bill Fifty, Gulf County was one of the first counties in the state to adopt a policy. And the policy is on speaking, how you approach the board, what you can say. But at this time, just for some clarification, I'm gonna ask our attorney, Mr. Novak, if he would, to take just a brief moment and go over the policy for Gulf County.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The staff has received a couple of questions over the holidays with regards to the ability to speak at the meetings. And just, we wanted to clarify it for the public. Going into the new year, since we adopted the ordinance back in November, it is the policy, it's the law of the county at this point. And any individual that comes will request, there's a form to fill out if they wish, and they can fill it out and put the subject of the topic in which they want to speak. There'll be allotted three minutes. If they indicate an organization on which they're coming to speak on behalf of, then that individual will be allotted five minutes under our ordinance. If they don't fill out a form, there's always an opportunity at the end of every meeting in which the commission will allot the public to come up. The same rules apply under the ordinance, they would be allotted three minutes as well. It is always at the pleasure of the commission to extend that time for any person that comes up. The clerk's office will let you all know when that time expires, and then you just make a motion to extend that time. But groups are five and individuals are three. And then, I know the staff had some issues or some questions with that. Going forward, that would be the ordinance applied in the county.
Is that it? Thank you. All right, having said that, this year will be different because of Senate Bill Fifty. Now, I will conduct the meeting somewhat different than it's been conducted in the past, and I want to stress to the board, it is no reflection to any of the past chairs. It's just something the state of Florida has implemented, and if the counties wanted to participate, they could, and which this county has chose to do that. I want to give you just a brief on me. I'm, you know, a native of Gulf County, and my family goes back to eighteen twenty-seven here and helped form this county. But I've always found over the years that you can get a lot more done by asking, thanking, and rewarding. I'm gonna ask, and by saying that, I'm gonna turn to the board here, and I'm gonna ask each board member to conduct yourselves in a very professional, kind, and courteous manner. I'm gonna ask the staff and the constitutional officers to do likewise. I'm gonna ask you, the audience, to do likewise. If you, if anyone, here, 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 we don't do dirty laundry here. We don't air dirty laundry here, starting this year. We try to move, we're gonna try to move forward. We want everybody to show respect to everyone. And to show respect, you know, a lot of times you have to earn respect. So I'm gonna ask that, that we do that, let's have some fun, let's have a good two thousand and fourteen, and see if we can't get some things accomplished. There's a lot of things coming up in two thousand and fourteen before this board, and let's work to see if we can strive that. Thank you, and now we'll go to our meeting. All right, this time, we'll call our meeting to order again. Thank you, and it's good to see a crowd like this. We need this at every meeting. Need people to get more involved in our county government. Again, thank you. This time, we will turn.
Yes, sir, we'll start with the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
We'll start with the consent agenda. Does anyone in the audience have any questions? If you do own the consent agenda, will you please come forward? Excuse me just a moment, I forgot. Mr. Murphy, excuse me just briefly. If you do, please therefore state your name and the nature of your concern. If not, do I have, is there anyone, any commissioner that has any pages that they would like to be pulled? You're in order, Mr.?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull page one seventeen and one eighteen.
One seventeen.
One eighteen.
We discussed.
Let's pull.
Page thirty-five also. I think I want to turn to the rest of page thirty-five. Page thirty-five. Any other? Commissioner Bryan, Commissioner Smiley? All right, you gentlemen, we're gonna pull page thirty-five, page one seventeen and one eighteen, is that correct? All right, we have a motion to accept the balance of the consent agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner McLemore, is there any discussion? All right, all in favor? There's no opposition? Pass five and oh. All right, Mr., we'll go with the low numbers. Mr. Yeager, or Commissioner Yeager, would you like to put what your?
Sure, I think, I think on the, on the page it has, the attorney has reviewed, but there's some more language, I think, that we need to make sure that the committee gets everything in that particular document.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. With regards to the emergency notification, they went out to bid, they've made a selection of their contractor. We're in the process of finalizing those terms, but there are some additional changes in language, and I just wanted to make your motion contingent on attorney review with that approval. I'm working with Scott and Marshall, and ideally we'll have that contract finalized this week. But there are additional changes, and I wanted your approval, subject to that final amendment and review.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve contingent on the attorney review.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Yeager, second by Commissioner Smiley, is there any other, any discussion? Motion passed five and oh. Is that it, Mr.? Thank you. Mr. McLemore, Commissioner McLemore?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the reason I pulled this, not that I'm against this, you know, a hundred percent, but I think, I'd like to see something a little bit different, the way we operated in the past. This is twenty thousand dollars that we're just turning over to the EDA. I'd like to see a plan of action. You know, I'd like to see where they're gonna spend the money, how they plan on building it, spending it. I think we need to do some cleaning up there before we pass this, and I'd like to table this, is what I like to do. They have not agreed, they have not kept their contract. There's a lot of clauses in there that I'd, that I'd love to see cleaned up before I support this.
McLemore, would you like to put down the form of motion?
Yes, I would like to table it, motion to table.
Motion to table, is that?
Second for discussion. With that, I think what we need to do, we have the staff and the county attorney to sit with the EDA and describe what's in that contract, what needs to be done, what reports need to be made, and that. We all go by the contract, so our motion's table until that, that, or second of that motion.
Opposition? Opposition? Motion to table, passed five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, I believe, I believe our public hearing on the five-year capital improvement schedule is next.
All right. Board recognizes, Richardson.
Mr. Chairman, page one seventy-eight of your packet in front of each of you, you'll have the public notice that was advertised on, for the hearings on January fourteenth and January twenty-eighth. It is two public hearings with regards to our five-year capital improvement schedule. What I'd like to do is you each also have a copy of the proposed ordinance in front of you. I can read the brief ordinance and then turn it over to the commission for comments and public comment, and to conduct a public hearing. The ordinance reads as follows, it's an ordinance per the requirements of Florida Statute one sixty-three, to yearly review and update the Gulf County five-year capital improvement schedule, adopting by reference the Gulf County School District two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen work plan, incorporating by reference an updated concurrency tracking data, and providing for the repeal of an ordinance in conflict therewith, and providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Mr. Chairman, I can read the wheresses if you so choose, and read them for the public as well.
Yes.
Okay. The ordinance reads, whereas Florida Statute one sixty-three requires a comp plan to have capital improvements element, and whereas Florida Statute one sixty-three requires the capital improvements elements to implement a five-year capital improvement planning period, and whereas the Gulf County Comp Plan Improvement Element has identified the five-year capital improvements planning period as the Gulf County five-year capital improvement schedule, and whereas the Gulf County five-year improvement schedule will be submitted for approval after adoption of the Gulf County annual budget, and whereas Florida Statute one sixty-three requires a five-year capital improvement schedule to be reviewed annually and amended by ordinance as necessary, and whereas Florida Statute one sixty-three stipulates only sanitary sewer, solid waste, drainage, and potable water are subject to concurrency on a statewide basis, and whereas Gulf County under the provisions of Statute one sixty-three has opted to continue concurrency for transportation, recreation, and open space in schools, and whereas Gulf County has no roadways that are operating below LOS quote-unquote "D" as specified in the comp plan, and whereas the DOT, Capital Projects, and projects subject to DOT grant funding listed in the DOT five-year transportation and Gulf County capital improvement schedule are subject to budget priorities by the state of Florida DOT, and projects may be advanced or delayed as necessary by the DOT. Whereas Gulf County has no facilities operating below the LOS concurrency specified in the comp plan, and whereas no Gulf County project is needed to eliminate a concurrency deficit only to maintain or improve, the enhance the quality of service, and whereas the updated concurrency tracking data is incorporated by reference into the yearly review, and whereas Gulf County adopts by reference the Gulf County School District two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen work plan with no financial obligation by Gulf County. Whereas the capital improvement project of Port St. Joe are referenced as an economic benefit to Gulf County with no financial obligations by Gulf County, and whereas the projects in the five-year capital improvement schedule for years one, two, three are funded, and projects in years four and five can be funded, or projects that are proposed pending funding. And whereas the city of Port St. Joe has delayed the construction of the sports complex, and therefore the Gulf County agreement to match the city of Port St. Joe contributions up to six hundred thousand dollars has been delayed to the fifth year of the schedule or until the local economy and burden on taxpayers has improved, and whereas the Windmark Annexation of Phase Three Sewer Project for Beacon Hill by the city of Port St. Joe has delayed construction date until additional project funding is secured, and whereas the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners held two public hearings, the first of January fourteenth today, and then the proposed adoption after our second public hearing on January twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen, and whereas the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners has made no goals, objectives, or policy tax changes to the capital improvements element, and whereas the Gulf County Board of County Commissioner updates the five-year capital improvement schedule to reflect a planning of two thousand thirteen, two thousand and fourteen through two thousand and seventeen and eighteen, therefore be it ordained by the Board of County Commissioners of Gulf County, Florida as follows in Exhibit A. If any part of this ordinance is held to be unconstitutionally void or invalid, the validity of the remaining part of the ordinance shall not be affected thereby, and is set up for the chairman's signature and witnessed by the clerk's office. Exhibit A is attached, and then you each have a copy of that packet in front of you as well. Mr. Chairman, I turn it over to you for first public hearing and comment, and then the commission's comments.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone in the audience have any questions, any concerning this? All right. We should go to the board.
Just one question. David, one of the things that I was gonna bring up today is, is the road at Thirteen Mile, partially owned by Gulf County, partially owned by Franklin. It, you know, it's, it's a road that would be an evacuation route for folks coming off Indian Pass or the Cape and that, that type thing. We need to have that in this, in this document, or, or would we need this in this document to apply for DOT grants? Would it, would it give it more weight if it was in this capital improvement?
Commissioner, the staff have discussed this with Franklin County, and that road is a very low priority for them, and actually does not have much weight as far as evacuations. It does for us.
Does for us, yeah.
And so, we have not pushed it too hard because it's gonna take their cooperation to make it work.
I'll take that on myself.
It's gonna be a difficult project.
I'll take that on myself then to work with Allen Pierce and that board, to try to do something together then, but I don't guess we need it in here, we can, we can chase that without it being in the.
We can add it anytime by ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, if I may? Yes, recognize, Mr. Richardson.
In, in the packet is some charts on demographics, and also, also, there is a status report applied to the board. One of the major things I like pointing out to the board is in your social profiles. You'll look at the chart when you get time. There are some major changes that has, has got me concerned for, on the, the health of the county, is, is, first of all, is the rapid rise of food stamps recipients. It is, it is remarkably going straight up. I mean, it's, it's pretty radical. And also, Social Security and Medicare is going up, yeah, as is Medicaid, and as the board knows with Medicaid, we've, just in the future, to be watching our Medicaid expenses if the trend continues, like with the sign-up of the Affordable Healthcare Act, if it goes to the Medicaid side, that could increase our cost for the county if, and I believe that's staff's opinion on that, so something we need to watch down the road. And also, in the staff's report, lists some threats and, and, and strengths for the county. A threat be like not being able to re-nourish the beach, which could affect our whole economy, not only habitat and everything along those lines. A threat could be the bigger Waters Flood Insurance Act, there's some headway on that, both nationally and on the state level to, to mitigate those effects. The inability to get the port going is our, and create jobs is a, is a threat to our well-being, and then, of course, and in solid ways. The strength is we do have the port, and the TDC, the ability of, of their efforts to market Gulf County, bringing tourism, the dollars, and the support is a positive. Our county population has not changed much in dealing with the county population, we need, the public needs to be careful to look at the total population, which includes inmates, and then look at an adjusted population, which takes out the inmates. For instance, your revenue sharing from the state is strictly based on, you know, removing the inmates, it does not include inmates. So, if there's any questions from the board, this is the first public hearing. There's a sheet, the capital improvement schedule summary sheet, that will be changing off, found some errors in it, I forgot to put in narrative projects and anything, update that, but that will, that will be coming at the next public hearing, and it's, and I saw, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, and this being the first public hearing, is there any comments, anything, Mr. Chairman, when's the next one?
The next one's on the twenty-eighth, Mr. Chairman.
Twenty-eighth.
The ordinance is in the clerk's office, and if anybody in the public wants his data, Mr. Richardson has this information available to them.
Thank you, sir. All right, at this time, here?
Yes, sir, we'll go to Staff County Business, County Staff Business.
Tomlin? Okay. Mary?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have just a couple of items. First item, we received bids, bid number thirteen fourteen dash oh nine, it was an equipment bid for South Gulf County Fire Department. We only had one bidder, and that was Genesis. Their base bid price was twenty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars for equi- miscellaneous equipment, and I spoke to Mr. Price yesterday, who could not be here this morning, but he recommends to accept this bid.
Now, this is for?
Equipment, equipment for South Gulf County Fire Department.
Yeah, is it extrication equipment?
Yes.
Mr. Whitfield, is that what it is? Okay, good.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, take.
All right. Commissioner Yeager has a motion on the floor to accept, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Commissioner Smiley, is there any questions? If not, pass five and oh. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, the next item I have, and I apologize, there was some confusion as to getting this into the consent agenda. We have grant agreement renewal, it's grant number A three 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 one with the Department of Corrections for our detention facility, and this is in reference to the agreement between both entities to decrease costs and where we're gonna send the inmates once they are transferred to state facility. And the attorney has reviewed it, as well as Mr. Hammond, it's, we do this every year, and it's simply to reduce cost on both ends without having to transport inmates multiple times and where they're gonna go. So I just need the board to approve this agreement.
So moved, got a motion by Commissioner McLemore, do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, we have a second by Yeager, any, any opposition to, pass five and oh.
Thank you, sir, that's all I have.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right.
No, sir.
Mr. Jenkins, good to see you this morning.
Thank you.
Whitfield. Lowry.
Yes, sir, I'm on line.
Thank you. Turn over, Mr. Danford. Nothing for Daniel?
Yes, sir.
Eppen Farmer?
Yes, sir.
Richardson?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Kapinski?
Yes, sir.
Nothing. You'll find something here, Mr. Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things to update the commission, first, on the courthouse in Willheda. I was pleased to report that we have a signed lease with North Florida Child Development. Over the holidays, subject, one of the conditions of the actual lease, long-term lease with North Florida was, do you do air quality tests and test the habitability, and make sure it's a safe front, first floor of the courthouse. The county conducted those tests, eight in all. After they came back, there was some minor remedial work done by a contractor, and that's now all been signed off. That information's all been provided to Ms. Gaskin and North Florida Child Development. They have provided their insurance certificates that are required under the lease, they've also provided to the county their first year's lease payment, and they are in position now to make that transition. They've asked for a little leeway as they're going through those audits and reviews that they go through each year on a state and a federal level, and they've asked for some leeway in terms of the transition time of moving their financial department from the second floor to the first. She also indicated that they wanted to do some work in terms of painting and carpeting, and some work on the courthouse where they're moving into. So with your approval, we were pushing for January for that transition, to give them some additional time to make that transition, ask that for that permission.
Mr. Attorney, have we received any partial payments on the, the lease agreement?
We have.
And the whole, and amount of?
It's a one-dollar check.
One-dollar check, there we go, we're making money already, right here. Thank you.
But to that point also, North Florida Child Development has received the invoices from the administrative office. All the invoices are going to them, and they're taking on the maintenance contracts and what have you with third-party vendors.
Oh, they're asking, it's just a little time due to, I think, what is it, a federal audit or a state audit?
Yeah, they, each year they go through for their grants and their funding, so they need some additional time on computers.
Okay, do we have a motion for, I need a motion to extend there.
Motion, but looks to me like if she has a lease, she can move in when she wants to.
Well, I make the motion. She was just showing courtesy to the board.
I'll, we can come back and report to you all if it gets past a month or two, we'll let you all know.
All right, all right. Your motion, McLemore, or second by Commissioner Smiley, is any? All right, motion passed five and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Over the holidays, an opportunity to talk with Roger Hall and Sacred Heart with regards to our EMS transport contract issue. As you all know, we've been working, Houston and myself and Mr. Butler, with trying to work out a contract with Sacred Heart for our EMS transports. The most recent discussions with Mr. Hall have resulted in a counterproposal from Sacred Heart through our latest offer. And what I'd like to suggest is either the commission setting up a workshop, or possibly putting on the agenda for the twenty-eighth, an opportunity for Sacred Heart officials to come. We can hopefully iron out any final details, you can ask any questions you have. Houston and I can provide you all some data with regards to our costs and our projected runs in the coming year, and then ideally we can work out some form of an agreement or contribution from Sacred Heart going into this new year to subsidize those transports. But I'd ask for your permission to either do a workshop or schedule Sacred Heart in the coming three weeks.
I'll put a motion on the table that we'll do a workshop.
Workshop.
A second.
All right, Commissioner Smiley, second by, I'd like to discuss on this, the people here. Self, Whitfield, our attorney, we've been working for seven months, make a proposal, they'll counter, we'll counter, they'll counter, we're getting nowhere. And it's costing right now, Mr. Whitfield, could you give me a rough number of how much money we're behind now? Just a rough, hundred thousand dollars?
Less than a hundred, probably eighty or ninety.
Ninety thousand dollars that we owe this county now. Last year, Mr. Whitfield and I, along with the attorney and the board's approval, we negotiated with Bay County to compensate this county or the services that we provide to the good people over in Mexico Beach, which is our neighbors right over here to us, and that's worked well, that's worked well. They're getting a good deal, and we're getting a good deal. What this is all about, the fact that we transport, it's not hardly a day, one of our ambulance, your ambulance, is transporting patients from Sacred Heart here in Port St. Joe, which I'm so thankful we have that here. So many years that we didn't have a, this nice, prepared a Panama City, all we're asking is that the taxpayers be compensated for this service. If not, they can find them another service to do their transport, but we want to work with them. This county went out on a limb, put a lot of money, what, a twenty-four million dollars or twenty-some, twenty, twenty-three million dollars to help get this facility, the good people up in Willheda can put a tax on theirselves when it's closer to Panama City than it is here to try to help. They know, we all know their, their importance of this. All we're asking Sacred Heart is to just help us offset some costs, because we... All we're asking Sacred Heart is to just help us offset some costs, because we, in 2013, U-Calls came up, the fact that pensions went up, everything went up. You know that, and you own a household, you know that, and that's all we're asking. We're not trying to rob these people, we're not trying to ask for anything that's not, that's out of the ordinary. So hopefully, with this workshop, we can get something accomplished before we bring it to the board. Now, we've got a motion, you made the motion on there. All right. Any opposition to it? All right, we'll have a workshop. Mr. Attorney, will you set up this workshop? Motion pass five and oh.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we, over the holidays, had a, actually, in the beginning of December, Habitat Conservation Plan. We received a grant to implement this Habitat Conservation Plan. We've been working with federal and state Fish and Wildlife. You all set up a technical advisory committee. We formed a extensive spec and request for qualifications for a technical advisor. The deadline came up, and there was considerable interest in extending that, and we did extend that through the 17th of January to receive bids for that RFQ. That's going to come in, in the coming days. The bids will be opened, I'm sorry, the RFQs will be opened on the 20th, and then shortly thereafter, the technical advisory committee will be getting together again, reviewing and scoring and making recommendations to you all on that Habitat Conservation Plan technical advisor. Also with that, there'll be an extension request for the deadline. I think it's June that the HCP needs to be completed under the grant, and we've already communicated with Fish and Wildlife and asked for their cooperation in seeking an extension so we can do the HCP properly and submit that with the technical advisor's assistance. We don't want to rush it. Ideally, on the 28th, we'd be able to come back to you all with some recommendations for a technical advisor.
Mr. Attorney? I know that when we extended this, we did not look into the fact that the 20th is a holiday. We will not be able to open those bids until the 21st.
So noted.
The last item is correspondence I've had with Michael Spellman from Sniff and Spellman with regards to the county's data evaluation on the redistricting and the census figures. In correspondence with Mr. Spellman, they have put a significant amount of time and effort into reviewing that data over the last month or so, and I've asked him if he can provide either a written update and report or to make a presentation to you all, ideally at the 28th or the first meeting of February, and we're working that out. So as we move forward in the coming two weeks, I'll hopefully have either him on the agenda or something from him to update you all on his work product up to this point. That's all I have at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My first item, I gave you a packet that we'll get into in a little bit, we yell at the top. My first item is recommendation to the county commission that they will affect utility companies, whether it be public or private, when they do damage to the county's roads, that they repair the roads with their contractor. We've had several, several situations here lately, one last week, where a utility contractor did damage to a county road, and we went out and passed the road. After a couple months ago, we went out and dove the road up. But simply, my recommendation to the board is to allow us, with the attorneys, to start the process to develop a mechanism to charge utility companies, public or private, when they do damage to the county railways, and bring it back to you later.
All right, wishes to the board, we've got a motion by Commissioner Mclemore. Do I have a second to that? Commissioner Bryan, second by Commissioner Bryan, is the discussion. We'll make a brief discussion on that. Good people, it's not your place to have to take your tax dollars, go out and repair damages that these contractors, you ought to go up in Weahidjka and see some of the things we do, then we have to turn around and make those repairs. They should be responsible. If they damaged the highways, if they damaged the roadways, it should be their responsibility, not you, the taxpayers, to bear the burden of this. All right, we have a motion, a second. Motion on it? Opposition? Not, motion pass five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, next item is the receivers' community budget issue request this time of the year. State's notified us that there's going to be severs this year, and in the past, we have taken advantage of sewer, and the only project I can think of, and I've already started working on the project, needed board to agree, is an extension of the sewer line for the city of Port St. Joe to Beacon Hill, and we've got estimated costs, we've got engineers, and the costs were working up thirty-four years, four or five years ago, but, like, we're talking about three million dollars, but in the end, it is what it is. But what I'm recommending to the board is allow us to make an application to the state through the SEVER process, C-B-I-R process, and also, in conversation with the city manager of Port St. Joe, they were interested also in sewer line extension to Beacon Hill, and they have a meeting next 21st, next Tuesday, and the city manager has already put on their agenda to talk at this Port St. Joe City Commission meeting about possibly applying for the same, same money for the same project. So if the board will agree, I will deal with the city of Port St. Joe and also get the SEVER request, and also, if the county commission will happen to January 31st to turn them in, if any other water, sewer, roadway project that may fit within their scheme, if you haven't got any ideas, we can turn those in too.
The 31st is the deadline.
Yep, 31st is the deadline.
31st is the deadline.
We've already got this project designed, shovel ready, we just need money to build it.
And Don, that's for distribution, isn't it? The sewer line's already run, they're just, distribution is what?
Truck line is there, all the way up to the proposed lift station site, and then distribution line need to be put in.
Okay, I would like to add, and I'll go before the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners to ask them to consider the same request, is to add that 13-mile road improvements, and whether that be, you know, doing stormwater improvements and doing raising of the roadway or whatever. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's important for the folks on the south end and Indian Pass, Cape San Blas, for that to be a usable road, because many times, it's a clay base, and we don't even have rock on it, basically, we don't have lime rock on it, we go, it's clay. But anytime you have a rain, it's almost impassable, and then you have to depend on, Franklin County has to depend on us to grade it when it needs graded on the iron, and we have to depend on them. So if you, if you would, let's put that on the request, and I'll go before the Franklin Board of County Commissioners.
And what Gulf County would do would be put the portion that's in Gulf County, and Franklin County would put the portion in Franklin County.
This, this is a very vital road, but it would take a lot of pressure. People down in Indian Pass, it'd take a lot of pressure off of C-30, I hear, through Simmons Bowling along there, and again, it'd be evacuation route, it'd help with ambulance, fire, law enforcement, so.
Absolutely.
I don't see why Franklin, I mean, it would be more of an asset to us or helped us, but I think our friends over there would understand and work with us on it. Hopefully, they will.
I'll convince them.
Okay, you need?
So, board agrees, I continue with those two SEVER requests.
So move, got Commissioner Mclemore, Commissioner Bryan, a second. Any further discussion, any opposition? No. Butler, five and oh, continue.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Chairman, next item, I gave you a package, about four items in that packet. Top page is the first page, many pages, of your current sideways contract with waste management. And the, what I want to talk to you about is, had conversation with the city manager of Port St. Joe, and their contract with their waste services is up the end of September. By the October, they'll have a new, new contract. Ours, you see down at the bottom of this page, ours ends May 31st. Also, at the bottom page, we have to give Waste Management a notice four months prior to May 31st, which would be January 31st. What we're going to do, if we don't give them anything, we're going, this contract continues. So my recommendation to the board is, for the board, allow me to deal with the city of Port St. Joe, for them to, they want to bid the same time we bid, if we, if we could extend our contract. One, there's three points to it. One point would be that we ask Waste Management if they will extend our contract up until the time that Port St. Joe's contract ends, in the end of September. Second one would be, see if, and got a meeting with Port St. Joe Thursday, with the city manager, Thursday morning, see if they will abbreviate their contract or if their contractor will shorten their contract to get out the same time ours ends on May 31st. Or, third one would be a combination of those two, somewhere in between. So if the board will allow me to talk with the city, there'd be, the whole goal, what we're trying to do is, city, hopefully both cities and the county, to bid solid waste services at the same time, to get a better price. So, one, if the board will allow me, I didn't want to go to the city of Port St. Joe and be talking, and without board approval, but if the county would, county commission would allow me to talk to cities, one, talk to Waste Management, see if they will extend our contract until the end of September.
Yeah, I was going to ask that question, okay.
Also, talk with the city and see if possibly they might get their contractor to abbreviate their contract, to end it on the same time ours ends, or meet somewhere in the middle. Those three things we're looking at. But if the board would, okay, board's okay with it, I'll move forward and report back to you. We will have to give Waste Management a master by 31st, we got a meeting on 28th, so we still have time to do it.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I think this is something we talked about in the budget time and even kind of give you the direction to go do that, so I'm all in favor of that. I think it's going to be a benefit to the citizenry if we can, you know, put those together. I think it'll be a lesser cost, so I'm all in favor.
I spoke yesterday, city of Weahidjka, they were under, ironic, this county had three services. Weahidjka was under parker sanitation, which, over the weekend, I saw where that Waste Management had bought out parker sanitation, so the city of Weahidjka will be back under Waste Management. They left it a few years back, they thought they regretted they did, but anyway, now too, one city in Port St. Joe, Waste, hopefully, what we're trying to do, people, is get together, get us all under one umbrella, where we can get those rates down and get service, and then we can implement some more services. Waste Management has a very, a broad service that they can offer, even up to the limb, pick up any of this, and it can be worked out very, it wouldn't be a great cost to the, to the taxpayer, it wouldn't be, right now, the taxpayer's spending, but it wouldn't be a great cost to the people. If they needed some debris picked up, Waste Management has a wonderful program and would do that, but implement that, city of Weahidjka officially back under Waste Management.
If we need a motion?
Yeah, I want a motion for you to proceed with the city of Port St. Joe?
Just the board acknowledged, I'm out there working on it.
That's fine.
Fine, fine with the chair, okay.
Mr. Chair, next item in that packet I gave you is, see a letter from the Ferguson Group, a letter to me.
In this same?
Yeah, that same packet.
All right.
"As your lobbyists in DC, they have been working on FEMA and Cobra issues. Here lately, they've been working on, to some degree, port issues. Had a conference call with them yesterday, Mr. Jaeger was on that conference call, happy to have us from the county on the conference call with DC. We're looking for a, a hearing before a House Subcommittee coming up, hopefully within the next 30 days. We thought it would have come up during December, but the government shut down for a period of time and threw them, threw them back. Possibly could happen in January still, but this is more of a before a House Subcommittee is very important for getting this Cobra lifted off the Cape and Indian Pass." So, but in front of you is a letter to me on the extension to our contract, and just want to, want to point out to you that the contract with Ferguson Group, you can get out of this contract within, with 30 days' notice, so it's almost like a 30-day contract. So, but we need board approval to move forward to contend this contract until the board says not to contend this contract. They are, they're still working on Cobra. Scott has done a lot of good workforce on maps, and we transmitted those to DC during the holidays. That's what we had the conference call on yesterday, and there's, this is our best opportunity to get done what we've been trying to do for a long time.
Mr. Chairman, we've been working on this for a number of years, and we didn't start making any headway until we hired this federal lobbyist. It's important to the Cape area, it's important to the Indian Pass area, it's important to our entire county to protect the habitat for our endangered species out there, and to remove it from the Cobra makes it a whole lot easier to get things done from beach re-nourishment right on through. In our conference call, you know, we've, I think this is the second year we've been in contract with them, hopefully, they think that before March, that we can have that hearing before the committee. One good thing going for us now is there are several other communities that have pretty good support that are, that are doing, trying to do the same thing. Another thing that benefits us now is, we're not just asking just to take us out of the Cobra, but what we do, what we have done, and Don has worked with staff, we've worked with staff to provide all the information, we're saying that they put us in by mistake. We, Cape San Blas had all the infrastructure back in 1983. One of the requirements of the Act is, for an area, for a barrier island or a barrier peninsula, to not have that infrastructure. We did, Cape San Blas did. However, back in 1983, nobody was really paying attention to the federal registry. That's another problem with the Act, is it doesn't require them to notify the county of what they're fixing to do. All they do is put it in the federal registry, and if we're not reading the federal registry, they can put it, the entire county in a Cobra, and you won't even know it. So we've got a lot, a lot of good things going for us. I think we'll get this thing accomplished in the next few months, so I'm in favor of continuing with this contract, knowing that if something falls through, we can in 30 days get out of this contract. So with that, I'll put it in form of a motion to continue that relationship.
A motion by Commissioner Jaeger to continue, second by Commissioner Smiley. Opposition? Here's five and oh.
Chairman, also in that same packet, last page is a letter from Gulf Coast Electric Co-op, Mr. Michael White to me, and what they asked him for, I had several conversations with Michael. The Gulf Coast Electric Co-op is looking for a lay-down yard to lay their debris, as they clear it right away, slay it down for a period of time in order to get a chipper in or tub grinder in to grind it up, and said he's going to sell it as fuel. They have asked, I've talked to Michael, he's talked, Michael's also talked, Joe Danford on the same issue, they're looking at the, that the co-op is looking at the Wichita Hoast site on Highway 22 on the east side, and if the county commission agrees for Gulf Coast Electric Co-op to use ours, it's out where we had the landfill at one point in time and transfer station at one point in time, to be a lay-down yard, we need an agreement with them, and the attorney will make sure we have everything in order. Also, there's a potential for any debris that we may generate, Gulf County government generates, we may be able to take it to that same site, and when their chipper comes in, chips ours up, and we not have to carry a tub grinder, do we all chip it up? It's, it's something that we'd like to be able to work out with Gulf Coast Electric Co-op, bring back to the board for the board's approval. We'll bring maps, and it's got to, it's got to meet their requirements, and also, if we do it, Gulf Coast Electric Co-op will get a DEP permit, or we won't have to do that, and we have an agreement with them to, for them to lay down and possibly, instead of some compensation, some other way, them compensating us to use our property, that we'd be able to carry debris there and drop it off. If the board let us continue with this and bring something back to the board.
Good deal.
If the board acknowledges that's what we're doing, we're working on, we'll bring it back to the board.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a, may I misplace mine? I think you received a copy, I've sent it to you email-wise, a copy of a letter we got from Ralph Wiss with Preble Wiss Inc. concerning the America's Ditch. He's got a proposal, thank you, he's got a proposal to the board in order to, to start this project, implement this, we need a board vote and a friendly vote to move forward. But two-page letter, probably don't want to read this whole letter, I know you've already got it, you've already read it, but he's, he's giving you a way that, he said, he'll go in and take his contractor, he'll fix five locations, and in so doing, he'll determine during, find out on those five locations what the problem is, he'll give a detail on how the rest of the problems on America's Ditch should be fixed, and for the, the one be fixed, and for the, the ones we've already identified, he will pay for materials and give us guidance and details on how to fix those. And, and so, a little bit more detail than that, what I just said, but there's a, uh, there's an offer here, I guess you'd call it an offer, uh, from Preble Wiss to, to work on America's Ditch, and I'd say in order for, for, to allow him to get started, we need a vote of the board to move forward or not move forward.
She's as a board.
I, I have reviewed the letter, and I'm, I'm happy to see this information come in, but what, what I would like to see is your attorney to flush this out a little bit and, and kind of break out the details, so we are all on the same page, so that the county and Preble Wiss are, are all in agreement, because it is in letter form, and, um, I would like to see it more in almost a, kind of a scope of work type format, so that we know we're all agreeing to the same thing, to avoid further issues down the road, and we've only had it for a couple of days. Um, and I have a few questions, I, I mean, we could go through it now, or we could just work on it between now and the next meeting, and just make sure that we're all in agreement. But I would like for Jeremy Chernovak to go through it and, and determine exactly what the terms are.
Mr. Attorney, do you have any on this?
No, I, I've read the letter, um, and in terms of the scope of work, uh, there should be a response from the county ultimately, based on the commission's decision, so if it's a response and a conditional acceptance, you know, I can certainly write that on behalf of the county commission, um, and provide that to you all, and with your approval on the twenty-eighth, we can send that correspondence back, which would lay out the scope of the work that's going to be defined. Um, like I said, I've read it, and I think I understand the scope of work, and I can provide you all with a, a response that we would send out to the engineer.
And one thing I have an issue with is, in the last paragraph prior to the closing, is that they, Preble Wiss has requested that the county acknowledge and confirm full performance of the original services as well as exceeding their scope for this project. Um, and I, I am an attorney, and I'm not functioning as an attorney for this board, but I can't turn off the knowledge that I have, and I, I would never advise a client to agree to that, um, in, in any circumstances, so I, I would prefer that the board not agree to that type of a broad statement. Um, I, I don't, I don't view this as a settlement, but more so as the county engineer stepping up and assisting the county with a project that had some very serious issues. And, um, so I would like, I would like us to move forward with this, but I, I don't want us to accept it as is, but just that we would work through this, and as you said, Mr. Novak, that we come back with a response. But we haven't had enough time, we got it a couple of days ago. I would also like to speak with Mr. Danford and Mr. Lewis, um, about the project before we agree to anything definitive. I guess I will make a motion that we, uh, move forward and craft a response to Preble Wiss, but I'm, I'm very happy to see this correspondence come in, and, and I'm, uh, thank them for stepping up and working with us on this project.
I second that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll abstain from that.
Let me discuss, if we could, please. Uh, I've read this letter, and, uh, been working on this project for, ever since I've been on this board and all, and there's a lot of unforeseen here, but this is strictly my feelings on this, and directing no one, but the Preble and, uh, Wiss, in my opinion, has went way above what they would, I, I'm, I'm really, I'm proud to see that they're willing to come in and make these repairs at their expense, and the other repairs, they will furnish the material at their expense. Maybe that shows that they're, they're wanting to work, they're wanting to get this project, we want to get it corrected, and we're working in the right direction. But, uh, just having said that, I have a motion on the floor. Seconded by Commissioner Smiley. Mr. Commissioner Jaeger, I understand that you will abstain, and you will fill out the proper documents at the end of that. I have a motion on the floor. Seconded by Commissioner. One, one comment, Mr. Chairman. Sure, go ahead, Commissioner. We have a, a company here that's agreeing to go out and spend money that legally they don't have to, to try to correct the problem, and we can't make a decision on it. They don't have, this company don't have to do anything on that project out there. Uh, they've laid it out, what they would do, um, my hat goes off to the company, and, and you know, with saying that, I, I don't, at this point in time, I don't think they should do anything, period. So I'm going to support that with a no answer on this board. I have a motion on the floor, uh, we'll start over here on my left. Uh, Commissioner Jaeger, you're abstaining?
Yes, sir.
How do you vote? Are you?
Yes.
Yes.
Other clarification of this motion. We're saying that we're going.
Oh, the motion is saying that we delay this for further, the attorney, Mr. Attorney, would you?
Sure, and my recommendation would be, if I, I'll simply draw up a memorandum of understanding between the two parties, between the county and the contractor, which is our engineer of record. It lays out the scope of the project that they've, uh, detailed in their letter, we'll provide that to this commission, and then we can get both parties to sign off on this, of what they've offered. My understanding is the county's accepting the scope of the work, just the conditions of the releases are the only question that are still outstanding, so the actual performance of the work, I don't, I don't hear any, aside from Commissioner McLemore, um, and the abstention, is that you're accepting the scope of work, we just want to itemize it and put in a memorandum of understanding. I'll provide that to you on the twenty-eighth. If it's acceptable to you all, then we'll provide it to the engineer, they'll sign off, the county will sign off, we can commence with the work.
Oh, yeah, man.
Sorry. And there are some clarifications that I think are, because of the nature of the correspondence, it is a letter, and oftentimes in a letter, there is some need for clarification as far as, um, what modifies what terms, and it's not unusual to have something put in writing in more of an agreement format, as you of course know, and rather than just agree on correspondence when, when someone makes an offer to do an action. Now, I, I will say, Commissioner McLemore, that I, I do not agree with your, the way you've surmised the situation here, but I'd rather us not get into a, a big discussion about it here, when it's something that we very possibly could have resolved through our attorney and drafting a proper document, which of course you would not expect to receive that document from Preble Wiss. They have done the right thing and sent the letter, and now we need to boil that down into a legal document that states what both parties agree to, so that we don't end up in this situation again, because we didn't have a, a full agreement. And, um, a- again, it's not just letting it go, it's just clarifying it, simplifying it, and then moving on. And it is, it's a big deal, and we should get it right.
One, one comment, Mr. Chairman. All right, briefly, and then we're going to vote. I don't agree with your decision. Okay, all right, you state your comment. Okay, Commissioner Smiley, you understand that we're, this is simply to let the attorney look, and that we'll come back on the, what, the twenty-eighth?
Basically, we just going to prolong it just a little bit.
That's, putting in very simple terms, okay. You have a yes vote for the motion, Mr. Uh, Commissioner Smiley, your vote? Yes. Commissioner McLemore? And the chair votes, yes, so we have, uh, one abstention, one against, and three for the clarification on this.
So now, once we get through with this, we can go ahead and start the work?
After twenty-eighth, after the twenty-eighth, we will make the final decision whether to accept this proposal and are rejected. Now, if we accept it, Preble Wiss proceeds, and if not? I'll be surprised if Preble Wiss don't pull their letter when they're in the next meeting. Let's hope not, we're just, uh, let's hope not. Okay, all right, Mr. Butler.
Mr. Chairman, my last item, last week I had a, had a meeting with the port chairman, and Mr. Tommy Pitts, with his engineering firm he's working for, and at that point in time, it sounded like maybe the port and their dredging of the channel from the bay out into the Gulf was going to be, going to be sort of quick, getting it done. It sounded like there may be as many as four hundred thousand cubic yards of material, beach quality material off the tip of the cape, you know, off tip of the peninsula, northern tip of the peninsula, out into the Gulf. At that point in time, it sounded as if we probably should proceed with the permitting and design permitting process to try to get that sand on our beach, that came off our beach, and try to get it back on our beach. Um, somewhat reasonably, now, it may not be that expeditious of a process to, for the port to get that sand and get it a mile down the beach to where we need it, but this is really more for board information than anything else at this point in time. At some point in time, if we find that it's feasible for us to utilize that sand off the tip of the cape and down on the beach, and it's economical for us, and it's cheaper for us to get that sand, we'd be go out offshore and dredge sand, then we need to be looking at design and permitting, um, of the beach nourishment project. This is not near enough sand to do what we need done, but it is four hundred thousand cubic yards if they're correct on their yardage and the quality of, of the sand. So for more information, anything else, at some point in time, we may be coming back to you with a recommendation to move forward with design and permitting of the beach, beach project.
Yeah, and let me just add to that, uh, in that meeting was Michael Dombrowski, he's our coastal engineer with MRD, and, uh, Michael reviewed, uh, a lot, and he gave us, he sent the TDC back a letter. Uh, at some point, we're going to have to do maintenance on that, so we're going to have to get that permit. Um, I, I think with the information that Michael provided though, he does recommend going forward right this moment, we need to further discuss and further review, and so, uh, let the board know it's, at some point, and the TDC will discuss that, uh, but at some point, we're going to have to permit that next project, and, uh, so that's coming, that's coming hopefully in the near future, but Michael Dombrowski is working on that.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Butler. Okay, Ms. Lanier.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, on the agenda today, we have Ms. Elaine Lurch, uh, in reference to county public relations.
Ms. Lurch, if you're in the, are you in the, there you are, young lady, come up if you would please, state your name and your address.
All right, Elaine Lurch, Marvin Avenue, Port St. Joe.
St. Joe, Florida.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Ms. Lurch, are you here representing yourself, or are you here representing a group?
I'm here representing a group of citizens of Gulf County.
Good, citizens of Gulf County.
Yes, sir.
Okay, did you understand in the, um, in the opening proceedings that, uh, you will be allowed the time to speak, and any of the, the group that you're representing, uh, can't speak?
Exactly.
They can speak after, when it goes to the public, okay?
Yes, yes.
All right, young lady? What was yours?
Okay, first of all, um, Chairman McDaniel, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
This morning, I really do appreciate that, I was pleased to hear that, and, um, and I think it relates to what I'm going to say here today, okay? I would like to read a statement, and I have copies that I will give to the clerk for anybody that would like a copy.
Please.
Okay, I am here as a spokesperson for many members in the audience who represent a wide cross-section of people in Gulf County, who are concerned about impressions and perceptions that the commissioners appear to demonstrate during their meetings. In many cases, the behavior of the commissioners is viewed as an embarrassment to county citizens. Unprofessional activities have been evident to anyone attending the meetings, as well as the many who view the meetings online and on television. This was especially evident during the November eleventh and December nineteenth meetings. Obvious bias has been shown since Commissioner Bryan was elected, including allowing county employees to speak to her disrespectfully, without being reprimanded or stopped, sanctions on her request for information, and demeaning comments directed at her being allowed during meetings. Many citizens feel that the residents in Ms. Bryan's district are being disenfranchised because her efforts are thwarted at every turn. County policy has even been changed to prevent her from properly doing her job. There is also a concern that the treatment of Ms. Bryan is in part because she is female. If true, this is totally unacceptable. Because of many of these behaviors, opinion among county citizens and others who attended or view the commission meetings is negative toward all commissioners. The image portrayed during these meetings casts demeaning and negative qualities on the entire county. We don't think this is what the commissioners intend, nor what they want to portray, but it is what seems to be happening, and it is what the local people believe is happening. We do not find this behavior acceptable, nor do we, as citizens of the county, want this behavior to represent us to the wide audience who view the commission meetings online. A further concern is the effect on economical development in the county. Anyone considering bringing new business to this area could very well have second thoughts when viewing the commissioners' meetings and reading about the meetings in the newspapers. Frequently, the county is not cast in a very good light. We want this behavior to stop. Today's show of support and the audience for a change in the way the commissioner behaves is the first step in our efforts to see that a change does take place. Respect for the office of county commissioner needs to be restored, respect for one another on the county commission needs to be restored, and respect for all of the citizens of the county needs to be restored. And basically, that is, you have the power, Mr. Chairman, to do this.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your time, and on an individual basis, I would love to come to these meetings, but I already had to take off from work to be here, so if they could go back to that time, we would appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm.
Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Toy Roberts, in reference to the RV ordinance.
All right, did he, uh, hey.
He filled out the form.
Sure, thank you. Boy, come on up.
First you know me, I'm Toy Roberts, I'm with America's Minister in the St. Joe Commerce Park. I'm here asking, uh, this board, uh, I hate to bring up a dead horse, but RV ordinance that was worked on for two years, is there any plan in the future to revisit it?
Boy, I, I tell you, we worked on it for two years, and there was a lot of opposition, both, there was, I mean, it's a fifty-fifty split. I, I, I'm okay with looking at it again, however, we do have things on the books that will prevent some of the things that are happening. Don, you may want to comment, or David, you may want to comment, but, I mean, uh, we have got to somehow get a handle on it, because St. Joe Beach is probably the worst section.
Well, that's what I'm here about, is St. Joe Beach, and plus also where I live, and I'm here speaking for my neighbors. Uh, one road behind me is the Monty Bayou Road, that subdivision allows RVs, okay? There's two RVs there, where the people that live beside them have their houses on the market, they can't give them away, because it's spot zoning. You let an RV go in an SFR one subdivision, it devaluates everything around it. But what I'm actually here about is, I've had ten people leave my storage facility in the last two months, going to St. Joe Beach, buying a lot, one person, and putting as many as four RVs on one lot, so what kind of tax base are they paying? They're paying taxes on a raw piece of dirt, and, and what bothers about to me was the day the last three came in, was the day I got my tax statement, and it just made me sick, and they thought it was funny. They thought it was funny, what they were doing, and, and believe it or not, they're broadcasting it everywhere. Go to St. Joe Beach, buy a lot, $5,000, see what I mean? There's no tax base there, I'm a local business, I pay over $30,000 a year taxes in Gulf County, and, and it's just not right.
Boy, I think what we have on the books now should prevent that from happening.
It's on the books, but enforcing it.
Yeah, uh, well, I think that's something that this board has, has said we would enforce after we couldn't get the RV ordinance passed. I mean, you saw the public outcry when we, when we tried to get something done with that, but, Don, isn't it, we've got on the books, one, one RV per. We've got on the books one, one RV per lot, correct?
For sure. We've got it on the books. Now, there's some things more I think we could do to put on the books. Um, there's some things that, some little tweaking would solve a lot of problems. Not talking about maybe Troy's problem, but, um, the people, what they're looking at is maybe cheaper to go buy a lot and put RV on a lot, or put four on a lot would be.
They're permitting that one RV, and then they're, y'all come down, and this past summer, I, there was four lots in St. Joe Beach that had four RVs apiece on them. There were five lots that had two or more of them, two to three. So if you're gonna make St. Joe Beach an RV park, think about all the people living in St. Joe Beach that's got nice houses, what it's doing to their values. And on top of that, what the money is taking away from Gulf County.
Mr. Butler, regarding the one per lot, how are we enforcing that at this time? Is, do we have a directive from the board on how to enforce that?
Uh, no. Yes, some of these, like most, we get complaints. Someone has put multiple RVs on a lot, and we go to it. To make a point, I say it this way, sometime we pass a thousand bad location to get the one we got to complain on. But there's never been wholesale going out and leasing the entire county for any infraction against LDRs. So, no, we, we don't have a directive to go and hit everyone that, we're, we're not looking. We're not looking, but we are going to those who get complaints on them.
So is our code enforcement officer permitted to cite a violation that he sees if he has not received a complaint?
He will, he will first go and talk. Um, for instance, I have one right close to me, my lot very close to me. And you know where it is on the same block I'm on. And the building department told me that it looked like they were getting ready to put three RVs in on that lot. He goes out and he talks to them, and come find out, they were not getting ready to put three RVs. They had an RV, and they were putting the shower, he put a 4x4 posted up for a shower. It looked like it's gonna be another RV location and another 4x4 pump with power on it. So it looked like he's getting ready, so the first thing he does is goes on, he talks, he finds out what's going on. Because this looked very much, and today it looks like, getting ready to put two more RVs in, but that was not the case. So it doesn't go out and cite them just because, but, but if, if someone has gone and put something on, we got a complaint on it, we'll, we'll notify them, leave them a notice, put them, make contact with building. Could it be tighter? It could be tighter, but we've never been absolutely tight.
Well, there's one other thing I want to say, too. All right, we're in 140 mile an hour windshear in Gulf County. If, and, if a storm comes in and an RV, and I saw it this weekend because we had 70 mile an hour winds, I live on the pass. If you've got an RV sitting beside a house that has to be built 140 mile an hour windshear, and you've got an RV sitting there with jacks, if that RV tears, tears up the house next to it, who's gonna be liable for it?
All right, hold just a moment.
I, I'll move.
Go ahead, Troy.
Well, my bug is one off.
I know, you got three more.
That's all I want to say. There's certain, there's a lot of things here that I know that we beat down for two years. And I'm not, I'm not against an RV by no means, but there's a place for them. And they're not in an SFR1 subdivision. That's what I'm saying. There's gotta be some stipulations put. If they're gonna put an RV, and that, there's two behind me, they're living in them. They're gonna have to make these people do something, these RVs, one, to make a windshear to hold them down to the ground. And two is, if you spot zone it, it's just devaluing everything around it. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Troy, thank you.
It is an issue. And it, it's an issue, and, and it, I don't know if it's one that we want to tackle again, but, I mean, we, we, we had an ordinance. We worked for a couple of years on that. I don't know if we give staff, uh, the authority to, to enforce our LDRs to a little bit tighter standard, but we work on, uh, you know, we put out fires is basically what our code enforcement does. When he gets a complaint, that's what he goes to, and that's basically all he's got time for. Um, however, if we want to tighten that up, I, I'd certainly try to work with staff or get somebody to work with staff to try to tighten up some regulations and try to enforce some of that stuff.
I would make a recommendation, even though we're just going through the LDRs and we've done those, there's always room to do them better. There's some things we do in LDRs to tighten up a little bit more and not really hurt too many people. You, I mean, there's some things, now, if I were to use another example that I can see from my house, RV goes in from Georgia, and they turn the back of the RV to the main road. So in everything, they're using the other side of the RV as the front and all the junctions in the back, which is on the main road. There's, for non-monumental purposes, if we need the main entrance located on the roadway, not on the back, back, on the backside of the house. There's some things we could do that would really improve. We got the setbacks tied down. There's, uh, at one point in time, they were setting them up close to the property line. Now they must meet setback requirements like a house does. That's some more tightening up we could do. We could probably work on it. David could say better than I could, but bring it back to the board for consideration. Be an ordinance change.
Me riding out on the beach on that inspection of the America's Ditch, I could see that problem. And it's beginning to be, turning into a major problem because you see two and three, like you said, parked on one lot.
One of the problems, too, is it's, it's in the tourist corridors a lot of times. I mean, it's, it's, we have on the Cape. I mean, we have some issues on the Cape, not near what you do in District 3, but we need to clean it up somehow, and I, I'm for staff coming back with some recommendations to clean it up.
And I would like to see the code enforcement apply an equitable manner that if someone complains about a neighbor and there's a neighboring property that has the same issue, that he can approach that, that resident as well, and not just someone he's complained about. I think we should leave it to his discretion rather than he pass the same violation to talk to someone who has that violation, that he'd be allowed to discuss it with anyone along the way that he sees with a violation. I know it's a lot. One code enforcement officer, and it's a big county, but I, I think we should be certain that it's up to his discretion if he sees a violation that he is able to, um, address it without a complaint.
Yeah, what, if the board wants us to be proactive and go out, you know, this is what happens when you go to someone, you hang it up on his doorknob, he may stop on cars.
Ain't no doubt about that.
Let me, let me make a comment on that. I, uh, spend quite a bit of time, code enforcement officer in the, primarily the north end of the county. And this man does a magnificent job. There's a lot of red tags hanging up there now in the city. And, uh, with disrespect to the city fathers of the city, we were hecking, but you know, uh, this one, but kind of look over there, but we don't necessarily do there as far as them. But all the people that we've dealt with in the north end of the county, in the county, you know, we, we pointed out to them, and I've been with him on a lot of this and say, look, you can't have, you just can't have this. You've got to, we've called the Department of Health. And on a lot of issues, we found out where it looked like septic tanks possibly had broken through and was leaking out on the ground. You must fix this, and he stayed on top of it. And to go through procedures, people, you just can't walk up there and shut him down right there. You have to follow procedures, step by step by step, and it involves the attorney here. This man, he's working, and, and to put this county 100% in code enforcement, we'd probably have to hire 25 people to do it. But we, we, we are, we're not ignoring, we're not getting them all, but we are getting some of them.
All right. Ms. Lanier.
Yes, sir. The next is board business.
Okay, we're going to board business. We're doing a little different there. What about you, Mr. uh?
Couple of things, we've already touched on.
Uh, Jaeger?
Already touched on a couple of them. Uh, we have one problem, and, and Ms. Hardman's in the audience, with, with the egress at, at C-30 and 98. We've talked to DOT. We've, I think there's been emails and letters sent to, uh, state representatives and all those kinds of things. We, we finally set up, uh, last time I talked to DOT, Ian Satter, we've set up a meeting specifically with the CCA, and that meeting will be tomorrow. Uh, so we'll, I don't know, Pat, if you, how many you've got, you may want to come up and speak to this.
Please, Dr. Hardman, come to the podium, please.
Hopefully, we can find some resolve with this issue.
Um, yes, we, Coastal Community Association, Patricia Hardman, uh, 123 Marion Elaine. Um, Warren Hask got us in a meeting tomorrow. I talked to the fellow. Uh, I'm afraid what he's gonna do is, they're sending out the same engineer that, that I talked to previously. We have opposed the closing of that egress from day one. Uh, and if you go out there, you'll find we're actually worse off because where they've moved the egress and the ingress, somebody turning in now blocks you from getting out. Where before it didn't. So we, we already got traffic problems out there, and we hadn't even got to the thing. But I have talked to Monford, who is, is, uh, on board with us, and I've talked to Bashir's, and he's on board with us. Um, and we'll just have to see whether or not they'll do anything, but I'm afraid what he's gonna do is come tell us again why it's his opinion that, that it's gonna be one egress. But, um, I, I, I don't think Coastal Community Association folks are gonna give up on this. This is, I mean, we drive that road every day, and it's a problem. And it's a, it is, and I appreciate even if you were there Wednesday to say, they've actually created a traffic hazard as, as well as traffic.
Dr. Hardman, let me interrupt you just briefly. What is the time and the location?
One o'clock at my office is in, um, Simmons Bayou, 1934.
And I'll be, I'll be there, Mr. Chairman.
And we're gonna have just a board and a couple of.
Get you a good group of people to come with you, please.
We, we have, um, just basically, uh, the board and a couple of, uh, business people and, uh, relatives out on, one, representing different people out on the Cape. Uh, I've asked, uh, the fishermen to perhaps send me somebody out to, so basically, we just got to get the fellow to quit thinking that he's got the only answer.
I, I think, you know, we'll, we'll see what this guy, what Ian has to say, uh, tomorrow. And then we, we, we won't stop on this. If we need to go to the District 3 secretary and all, we'll get the District 3 secretary down here. Tommy needs to get out of the office, so.
Mm-hmm.
We'll get him down here and, and.
Let him try to get in and out.
Show him the problem. Uh, I don't want to take away from the project. The project is a great project. It's widening the roadway. It's fixing storm water issues. Uh, it's already, in my opinion, much safer, and, and, and it's a great project. I appreciate DOT doing it. We just need this egress fixed, and it's not a, I don't think it's a major problem to fix it.
No, it's, put it back like it was. It wasn't broken.
And it's not expensive to fix it, so we'll, we'll continue.
In fact, it's still there. One of the reasons we were pushing this was before they tear the egress out. Uh, to leave it alone. Just leave it.
Mr. Jaeger, will you, Commissioner Jaeger, will you be representing the board there tomorrow?
Yes, I'll be, I'll be there.
If something comes up, you give me a call or have the staff to call me, and I'll be there.
Okay.
All right. Uh, Dr. Hardman, let me, let me make a comment or two on that.
Come up our way. We had a perfectly, uh, we're up there right now. I've had an issue with the good people out in Overstreet, and then we got them up there and this. And it's amazing to me how someone from, uh, West Palm Beach knows more about this situation out here than the people that use it daily, daily, daily. That's what you want to do. If you want to catch fish, go talk to somebody that fishes. They'll tell you what it, what it might. But we have the same thing when we were hecking. We go up there right now, we have our apartment up there. We, I asked for caution light at 386. Well, there's not enough tra, it don't matter about the traffic. It's a dangerous situation. The sheriff and I, we fought this since he's come on board. But give us a probably $1,000, $1,500 sign. Well, I got a call one night, and I was standing in the rain waiting till the public workers could get up there and erect a barricade, wiped out. The other day, got a call from a, a person going by, hey, your sign's laying on the, laying on the ground. So we're up there now trying to put some preventative measures around it, but it don't seem like they want to listen to the people that probably know the best. Go up to, uh, go up to another.
They have their opinion, and it's, it's better than anybody else's opinion.
We didn't have a problem there, and now then, every day, everybody breaks the law. The sheriff could have a whole bunch down here because we crossing about two sets of double lines. To get to the place, you gotta go way over there to get in there. Lawfully, but anyway.
Common sense, common sense doesn't prevail in government, unfortunately.
And this, and this board supports you, and I'll see you bring a good group of people out there.
Appreciate you. But if we'll stay on it, I think we can get it. And, and while I'm up here, just one quick thing. Our, our Coastal Community Association meeting is February 1st, and we'd like to invite all of you to come. It's a good forum. We do, we are having the state boys and the, and fed boys come down as well, uh, to, to that meeting. It's 10 to, uh, 12 at the golf club. Uh, we'd like to invite all of you to come, hear the citizens out there. It's a good meeting.
Give me a call. I'll be glad to come.
All right. The next item, I just wanted, uh, you know, I'm working on trying to work with state and feds on trying to fix some of this, but I, I think some of the citizens are now up in Gulf County receiving their bills for flood insurance rates, and David's mentioned it many times, the Biggers Waters. Uh, some, some of the flood insurance rates are, are to the point that people are gonna lose their places. And I've heard those horror stories in South Florida when I've been at some of the fact meetings, that type of thing. You need to write your congressman. You need to write your, your, uh, your senators. Uh, this is a federal issue. Uh, when the governor was down before, there was comment to the governor about this issue, and the numbers that I had were basically the numbers that he had, and, and it was, Florida's a donor state to the, to the flood insurance program and have been since inception. Since inception, Florida has contributed, I say Florida, the, the purchasers of flood insurance have contributed, uh, 16 and a half billion dollars into that program and haven't received but 3 and a half billion. So we're not the problem with, with the National Flood Insurance Program being, uh, having a deficit. Florida is not the problem, and, and they don't need to put it on the residents of Florida back to, to correct the problem. Now, there's some good legislation going forward. If you want to track this, the Ferguson Group has something on their website about this. They can, you can, you can click on the bill. You can track it. And so, um, you know, just for informational purposes, stay on top of it because the only way that, that it's gonna get fixed is us continue, and, and we need help from other states, too. So, um, that's going forward, and, uh, I, I think somebody saw on Facebook where, uh, somebody locally, their, their rate had went from $2,500 a year to $16,000 a year. That's how critical it is. You can't afford $16,000 a year for flood insurance.
I, I can, I can tell you this, Mr. Jaeger, mine went from $200 a year to $4,000 a year.
It's going, it's gonna go up some more, too.
It's not, because I had to drop it, you know?
Well, you're fortunate. Some people can't drop it. They'll have, they'll, they'll have a mortgage, and, and, and the mortgage company will place some insurance for them, which would be more expensive what, you know?
I elevated my house for a 31-foot flood. I've never seen that. That's not in history. And I, you know, I can't afford to pay $4,000 a year.
It's, it's, it's a problem.
I paid 200, but just, was safekeeping, you know, that's reasonable. But when they raised it to 4,000.
The only other thing I had, Mr. Chairman, initially I had talked about getting off of the TDC board, but with the issues coming, with the beach renourishment, with the, with the port issues, with pumping sand from the port channel, uh, and talking with, uh, uh, the TDC director, Jennifer, I, I would probably like to go ahead and continue serving on that for one more year to get us through this process of this beach renourishment program. So if that's okay with the chair, I'll.
Sure, because I was gonna take on that task, but I'd be gladly, you know. Not nothing against you, uh, but anyway, my wagon's pretty loaded on other things, too. Anything else, Commissioner? All right, that's, let's go over here. Commissioner Smiley.
Well, during our meeting, we touched bases on a few things that I really want to talk about. It's called consolidation. Um, I have had several constituents to come to me, and they said, well, Smiley, you haven't brought up consolidation in a while. Well, me being a county commissioner, and my district fall inside the city, I pretty much have handcuffs on me. Very little that I can do. I mean, I got situations going on in my district that I see you guys getting grants to fixing your guys' district that I cannot reach out to get, do the work in my district. Um, and the government of the city applied for some grants, but it's, it's lots more things that they could do, just, just not being done. Uh, we talked about solid waste consolidation. Said that we want to save the taxpayers' money by consolidating our solid waste. But right now, we got two police departments. We got two police departments. We got two building departments. Now, I'm trying to figure out, you know, do it cost more to run two than it takes to run one, which is not very hard to figure out. So I just wish that our city commissioners would take a good look at it, get what our sheriff. I know this is a, this is something that some people don't want to talk about. But when it came down to talking about closing the recreation center, it wasn't no problem to sit down and have a discussion about it. to sit down and have a discussion about it. When it came down to laying peoples off within the city, that they had to do, they had no problem sitting down and talking about it. We need to sit down and talk about these different things. We got 13,000 people in Gulf County. Counting inmates, we got 16,000. So, you counted 3,000 that's already being watched, oh, we still have to worry about those guys. So, you got 13,000 peoples, and we got two police departments. We got two police departments.
I'm not being.
If I want to, uh, build something onto my house, I got to go out and get a building inspector out of Bay County, come to Saint Joe. When I work for the county, and we got a super building department right here within the county. If I want to get my businesses inspected, a fire, I got to go to Bay County. But we got super employees right here in the county that works for us, that the citizens of the city of Saint Joe help pay their taxes to help on these guys. So, this is something, I just wish our city commissioners would sit down with our sheriff, because I mean, the position that we hold right here, these positions carry very, very amount of power. Sheriff's position carry power. That's why you vote on it. That's why it's up to you guys to determine who's sitting in these chairs. We got a chief of police, you got five guys determining if he's sitting in that position or not. I don't have nothing against this guy. I don't have nothing against this guy, but I get to vote for this guy. On this, on the chief of police, I got five guys making a decision for me. And right now, you know, if anybody know like I know, I worked for the city for 15 years, I know the reason we got two police departments. The reason we have two police's departments is because we had Saint Joe Paper Company. Guess what? Saint Joe Paper Company's not here no more. During the time, Saint Joe Paper Company was here at the wastewater treatment plant, they paid 96 cent of every dollar that was spent at that wastewater treatment plant. Somebody got to foot that whole dollar now. With our water rates going out, racially high, um, lots of people refused to even build in the city. We got more people leaving out the city, out of my district, going into other people's districts to build, simply because it's cheaper. And I think there's some things that we can do within our city to lower the cost on things, and consolidation is one of them. And I just wish that our city commissioners would take time out to look at these. The last time I spoke about it, um, they put a show on to vote on whether they're gonna look at consolidating other police department and the building department. That was just a show. I want them to sit down and have a serious meeting on what it's, what take for the county to take over, and if the money don't, if the numbers don't match, we continue to do what we're doing. At least let's take time out to look at it. I don't, I always believe when a person don't want to look at something, they're kind of scared what you're gonna find. So, that's my opinion right there, and, um, that's it.
Let me make a comment as the Chair, uh, Commissioner Smiley, this board has no control over the, uh, the city fathers, the city of Saint Joe, and, uh, any people that's dissatisfied or have questions, there's where it's really got to go before the city fathers. There, we, 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 we've got enough on our plate, but, uh, we'll have to go there. Anyway, I think, I thank you for the comments you made.
But what I'm saying is, the district that I represent.
That is absolutely true.
So, that district will come to this podium sometime.
Sure.
Because I represent it. And I'm just sitting here, and I look at you guys, y'all apply for different grants to do different things in you guys' district. I can't do none of that stuff, and my district is liking. Right, right now, we building homes inside the county, but I can't bring that project to the city. That's what I'm talking about. So, now, I can't do nothing, but I can talk about it, and it's not right. I mean, I, I can't put a motion on the floor to do no work inside the city. Everything that I do inside, I can see something falling down in the city, and I got to get permission to fix it. So, what I'm saying is, certain things that I see is wrong, if I don't have the power to get it fixed, I can talk about it. These things that I just spoke about, there's some things that we need to consider. I mean, the city, the CDBG and the ship work together to build homes for people in the county. Why the city and the county can't get together to build homes in the city for people? Come on. So, that's just something I, I, I mean, that's, that's been on my, it, when I'm sitting as a county commissioner and requesting certain things to make my district better, and I would love for each one of you guys, we can get with Mr. Jim Norton, he's a great friend of mine, we can get a school bus out here, and I can give each one of y'all a tour ride, and I can take him back in time. Follow me. Leave that alone, Mr. Mike Davis.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Bryant.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to everyone in the community who came out to the meeting today. It, it is great to see a full house, and I know you had to take time out of work and taking care of children, and your busy schedule, so I do appreciate everyone being here. And I also appreciate the support for open and accountable and full representative government, and I hope that's what we will do going forward this year. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Commissioner. Too good. I don't, uh, Commissioner Jaeger, a couple, couple of items, uh, not yet, but I want to take just a moment to thank, uh, the TDC Director here, Jenkins, for a job well done over the, the holiday during the Christmas and the New Years. I understand it was very, I've talked with a lot of the businesses, they've said it was very successful. They're looking forward to next year, and your staff and the board are to be commended. That's all I have. In closing again, thank you for coming, and, uh, whoa, that's right, I'm sorry, see, I done messed up, right? Does anyone in the, uh, Ms. Lanier, do you have any more?
No, sir.
All right, does anyone in the audience, uh, like to address anything and come forward to the board? If you do, please come forward and add your name and the nature of your business.
Tom Sims, County Road, uh, 386 at 1730. It's timely publication of the minutes. Uh, you had the September minutes, so you had the last part of September, you had all the month of October, all the month of November, all of the month of December, and the first 13 days of January. That's not timely publications. Why can't the minutes today be published in the next meeting of the Board of County Commissioners? Why do we have to wait so long?
Well, let me give a brief comment on that. Uh, and some of the delays were due to the holidays around.
It's always been late.
Well, noted.
We'll work on it.
Yes, so noted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not, thank you for coming out, I want to thank the board for being very professional today, the staff and the people. I hear, I need a motion.
Come on.
There it is. Let's go. Thank you, brother, thank you. I need some.